Good afternoon. It's 3:00. This is the Finance Authority Special Meeting Agenda Study Session, Wednesday, January 27, 2021. Call to order. Roll call, please. Dana?
Councilmember Hoffman? Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Alamon?
Here.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Here.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion. Sorry. All present.
It's all right. It's 3:00. We'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Protem Newton.
by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Greg. Right now, we will have public comments. This is the time when persons viewing wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk at citycouncil@ci.norco.ca.us. That's citycouncil, all one word, at ci.norco.ca.us so that you may be recognized. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any public comments, Dana?
Yes, we do. We just had three come in. The first one is from Alicia Sisson. Honorable City Council members, I ask that you please listen to the citizens of Norco when considering bringing affordable housing programs to our town. The citizens of Norco have always been clear on this topic. Low-income, high-density housing doesn't exist where large lots and animal keeping flourish. I ask as a resident of over 20 years, a volunteer in the community, and a mother raising her children here, please do not allow affordable housing programs within our great and unique The next is Mickey Rivera. We have a number of small vacant lots all over the city. They aren't useful for horse property or animal keeping. Nobody really wants big apartment complexes, but what about duplexes or triplexes? It might be helpful to fulfill the demand of the state to offer affordable housing and help the city by adding to the tax base. Further, consider if some modification of rules might be allowed to encourage small local builders to take on projects like this. Red tape. Thank you for your consideration, Mickey Rivera. The last one is Karen Boersma. How much money annually would Norco lose from federal and state if we do not comply with state requirements to address the lack of affordable housing in the city? And let me just make sure I didn't get anything else. That's all the public comments. Thank you.
I should probably note, just for the record, that those really weren't public comments, that they were comments about the agenda item. So they'll be reflected.
I kind of wondered about that, but I wasn't going to interrupt Dana. Closing public comments. Moving on to -- geez, Jerry Nadler. Going to number two, City Council Discussion Action Items. Order of presentation for discussion items. Staff report presentation. Council questions of staff. Public speakers in favor, against, neutral. Council discussion and action. Moving on to 2A, Presentation of Housing Programs and Resources Memorandum by RSG, Inc., beginning with the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I turn it over to the consultant to present the material for this study session, I'd just like to make some few comments regarding as to how we got here today. If you recall, when the redevelopment agency was dissolved back in 2011, 2012, we decided that we were not going to serve as a successor housing entity. We're not going to administer our program. And there are two reasons why we did that. Number one was because of the difficult--
Andy, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. I want to make sure people hear what you're saying. Would you mind just take -- is it okay to take it down a little bit? Thank you.
So there were two reasons why we decided not to serve as a successor housing entity after the redevelopment agency was dissolved. Number one was in regards to the difficulty of actually administering an affordable housing program in the city of Norco. Number two was we didn't know what rules and laws and regulations were going to be coming out from the state with respect to affordable housing. So as a result of that, we didn't want to take it. We went back to the county of Riverside. Based on the dissolution law, if we didn't want to do it, it was supposed to go back to the county housing authority. We went to them. In fact, we had several meetings with the county of Riverside. And after those several meetings, they decided that they didn't want to do it. Shift forward up to 2015, after additional consideration and with the establishment of AB 341, and then the desire by the city council to try to have us reestablish some of those programs that were beneficial to our residents, specifically the emergency grant program as well as the utility assistance program. We then went back in 2015 and had the housing assets transferred where the city now began to reimplement some of the programs we had prior to the dissolution of the agency. What, of course, we did then was we returned the services of well done to do those programs on the city's behalf. And they have been doing it since 2015. Sometime last year, that the contract we had with them expired. And we went out with a request for proposal, trying to select another contractor or consultant who will administer the program. And we actually received, I think, maybe three, maybe four proposals through that process. And we shortlisted two of the proposals and did an interview with them. As we were going through the interview process, it became apparent to us that, first of all, in order for us to do something meaningful with this housing program, we needed to have, first, a review of what we are doing. Because it seemed like what we are doing wasn't actually addressing the needs or meeting the requirements of HCD. So at that particular time, I decided to ask the two shortlisted consultants to provide us another proposal that will, first of all, deal with the issue of reviewing our existing programs to make sure that these programs actually comply with state law, number one, and, secondly, that there were something that could help us get to where we want to be with respect to affordable housing program in the city of Norco. We also wanted them to give us some recommendations in terms of how we could become more effective and at the same time comply with state laws. Through that process, we selected RSG and have gone through the scope of services we requested of them. And Tara Matthews, who is a principal with the firm, is here today. They have completed their job. And she's going to help us understand housing programs here in the city, report on her findings and recommendations. And with that, I will turn it over to Tara.
Thank you. You've turned me on. Hold on to the mic. So good afternoon. So bear with me, because you have a presentation in front of you that is quite lengthy. As we started the review process of looking at your existing housing programs and existing housing resources, we also thought it would be a good idea just to kind of talk about housing in general, kind of where the state is right now, so that we could take all of that into consideration when coming up with possible recommendations on how you may want So we've broken down the presentation kind of into three main sections, and it follows our report that you all had received in advance. So we took a look at reviewing the community, the community characteristics, community goals. What you have is your goals in your housing element. And then also did a summary of recent housing legislation and kind of the state stature on affordable housing and working with jurisdictions to try to improve and increase the amount of housing units that are being built in the state. The second portion of the presentation will be going through reviewing all of your existing affordable housing assets, so land and money and loan receivables and other things that you have available, as Andy was mentioning, as part of the housing successor. And then, lastly, we have kind of packaged that all together into some major kind of findings and recommendations to kind of discuss, just to get things moving for you all to consider what could potentially be the best way in your community to address state requirements, the lack of housing, the lack of affordable housing, and your overall community characteristics. So we're going to start with the community characteristics, just kind of briefly go through what we noticed when we started to take a look at demographic information. We looked at income information. We looked at occupations in the region, housing cost overall, to kind of come up with a few findings to kind of help set the framework for who lives here, who works here, and what could potentially be needed. So we found that, overall, the population is aging. So there is an increase in the number of residents over the age of 55 in the community, which means a lot of younger families aren't necessarily coming into Norco, but that you have a population that has been here for a long time and that's aging, along with the housing stock. So your housing stock, you have a large number of housing units and single-family homes that, you know, have been past that 25 to 30 years. It's kind of the standard before homes need substantial or major rehabilitation. So the average housing age is about 40 years in the community. We also noticed that most of the units were primarily single-family detached, so you don't have a lot of multifamily units or apartments in the community. Overall, and this is not unique to Norco by any means, but housing costs are rising. That's not only existing housing, but even just the cost to build housing, everything's increasing. And there's anticipating, especially with the pandemic and supply chain issues and all these things, that that's going to continue to increase. And then we also took a look at the regional occupations, and I have a chart here in a little bit to kind of walk you through the top 10 there, and just, you know, how much are people kind of making to be able to afford to live in the community? So we're going to kind of go through these in a little bit more detail, but that's kind of a summation of what we found. So again, you know, just kind of aging population, most of the homes are over 40 years old. You know, it's about 2/3 of it in the community of your housing stock is over 40 years old. If you look at a nationwide average, that's more around the 53%. So that's a little bit more than what you would typically see across the nation. You know, and kind of the combined effects of these things is that there's likely means that there's a greater need potentially to rehabilitate some of these existing homes in the community, and especially for like a senior population. So kind of the second takeaway here is, you know, a median home price here is about $597,000. So we'll just call that $600,000 for discussion purposes. You know, and that requires a household to have an income of $118,000 per year to be able to afford a home in the community. Also, looking at rents, although there's fewer rental opportunities, but for a two-bedroom apartment, you would need to be able to make $75,000 a year for household income to be able to afford that. The average market rent is about $1,700 per month. You know, and looking at the occupations in the area, the average comes out to about $51,000 per year that those occupations are making, which you can see on the next chart that we'll get into. So, you know, what this starts to point at is that a lot of the households may be cost-burdened or paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So kind of the state law standard that you'll see in the Health and Safety Code is that households should be spending 30% to 35% of their household income on housing costs. Once they begin to pay more than that, then they're cost-burdened, and there's less discretionary funds to, and hopefully the world opens back up, to spend in restaurants and stimulate economic development within communities. The other piece here that's kind of important to point out, you know, based on the incomes in the community, you know, 48% of the households are earning enough to support an apartment rent, yet 95% of the housing stock in the community is homeownership units. So there's a little bit of a potential imbalance there. So the last slide that we'll talk about regarding the community characteristics is just kind of taking a look at the regional occupations and wages area-wide. So again, you know, considering the income needed to rent or own a house, so again, for homeownership, that's $118,000 for a four-person household and, you know, $75,000 for an apartment or to rent. So when you start looking at the occupation, so these are the top, you know, major health sectors based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, you can start to see that a lot of those average annual incomes are falling below that amount. So again, this would be one person working there. So if there was combined household, you could potentially have dual income earning household, which could help to, you know, better support housing costs. But as a general rule of thumbs, it could potentially mean that there's a lot of people that are at that cost-burdened limit. And then just for reference, for affordable housing limits, when you start to look at what that actually means, when the state, every year, they update what the median incomes are and the percentage of the median income that falls into the categories of moderate-income housing, low-income housing, very-low-income housing, and extremely-low-income housing. So for a four-person household, just for reference, a low-income household is considered low income if they're earning less than $60,250 per year. And moderate income is if they're earning less than $90,350 per year. So that's just a kind of a little bit of a benchmark as you're looking at these figures. So again, we just kind of looked at those demographics just to try to get a better understanding of, you know, some of the characteristics in the community. And now we're going to move forward, all of these things I promised tied together in the end, at the housing requirements. So, you know, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody that there's a housing crisis in the state of California, and the state has made it a priority within the last few years to address that. So we are going to talk a little bit about RENA. So that's your regional housing number allocation. That gets down to the preparation of your housing element. And then we're also going to talk about, there's many, many housing bills, but we're going to talk about a few that we're going to highlight to help you kind of make a decision regarding the use of your housing resources and assets. So we're going to go through this portion now. You know, I do have to say that, you know, the state is definitely perhaps taking a more aggressive posture or stance towards local jurisdictions and governments. So as we start to go through this, you know, you've had RENA requirements, you have had housing elements, you've kind of had these things in place, but they have increased their enforceability, trying to hold jurisdictions more accountable, and they're really wanting to see the production of units. So we'll talk about that a little bit so that you're aware. I just have to say I'm just the messenger, so I didn't make the rules of the legislation. So the next slide here, again, this is just coming from your fifth cycle RENA requirement. So the first column there is just showing you basically the number of units that were to be produced. And then the middle column is basically detailing your production, how much you've met of that RENA requirement. And then the sixth cycle is currently in the process of being finalized as part of your next housing element, but these are the additional units that are going to be added that need to be produced in the community. So, you know, under state law, basically, every city has to do their fair share of meeting regional housing needs. And so that gets, the overall large number gets determined at the state level, and then it's broken down into your COGS or SCAG, in the case of you all. And then those numbers by region get distributed, and then SCAG then divvies that out by each jurisdiction, of which I'm sure you're familiar with, because it's sort of in the process of that right now. So, you know, these numbers aren't to say you have to, the city, build all these units, because the state legislature recognizes that you don't have, you're not developers, right? You're not out there constructing the units. But you have to remove impediments from these units actually being developed, which is why, back in 2012 and 2013, the city adopted the Housing Development Overlay Zone. So you have that in place, which was to allow for higher densities of development of up to 35 units per acre. So that overlay zone has a potential of up to approximately 3,300 units. So you have taken some effort there, right, to be able to accommodate all of these units being produced in your community. So 2017 was a very, very big year for housing regulations. They passed what was called the 2017 Legislative Housing Package. This really bolstered the state's ability to track and enforce local government's progress towards addressing housing needs and ensuring that impediments to development were removed and reduced. And what they're doing now is they're tracking a lot of this progress in, number one, your housing element. And two, there's a thing called an annual progress report that you guys probably see around April. It gets sent to the state April 1st every year that shows, you know, production and how many units are being built. You're having to report additional information, of which we'll talk about now. They've added additional layers in there, because that's what they're going to be looking at to try to see, basically, if a jurisdiction's being what they're considering a good player or a bad player in the production of housing units. So the 2017 Legislative Housing Package kind of did the four things that are kind of listed on the bullets here. So, you know, that's provided critical funding for affordable housing, so there was new resources and money to build housing. They also provided legislation that increases development, so removing impediments, so accelerating. We'll talk things about SB 35, which was in the news for a while, but basically, it's kind of taking away some of the discretion that cities had and making things more ministerial if you're on the so-called state's naughty list for production of housing units. Again, just the accountability for addressing housing needs. We'll talk a little bit about Huntington Beach. They are also in the news. The state went after them for impeding development of housing, and they have more recourse and a little bit more teeth before you kind of could just do housing element, have the numbers in there. If they didn't necessarily get done, it didn't really get done. But now they are coming in saying, well, if it looks like a jurisdiction's like stopping projects from being built, there's potentially all of these ramifications without making special findings. And then the goal as well was to create opportunities for building new homes and preserving existing affordable units. I do want to say that when we talk about RENA and housing element, today, you're going to hear me talk a lot about affordable housing, and that's because we're talking largely about your housing successor, and those are required to be affordable. But your housing element and your RENA requirements do include above-moderate or units as well, which is not considered affordable housing. So these are the five bills we're going to go through today. So we have AB 72, AB 678, all of these listed here, you know. And like I mentioned before, there's been a lot of housing bills passed in the last three years. There is many more than this, but these were the ones that we've hand kind of picked that would tie into helping you all make a decision on how to leverage your existing housing assets. So the first one is getting back to that Huntington Beach case. So AB 72 was passed, and it granted the housing authority, or granted the state and HCD the authority to review violations for failing to adhere to your housing element or housing element law. So if your actions are doing something inconsistent with what the housing element says or what housing element law is, they can now come in and take corrective actions. Even referring the case to the state office of the Attorney General, which is what happened to Huntington Beach, they basically said that they were refusing the production of units and basically stalling the production of affordable housing units in the community, which would be inconsistent with your housing element, because your housing element, as you saw, has units at all the various income levels. And so they went at it for a while, and they ended up coming to an agreement for the production of 500 units at these six specific developments. This is the only case so far that I've seen where the Attorney General has been involved, but it has happened and is an example. They can also decertify your housing element and, you know, get a little bit more involved in your business, for lack of a better term. So this, you know, this came about, and it's really the state kind of making sure that they have a hammer to come down on local jurisdictions for not complying, adhering, or trying to produce housing units. Again, just the messenger. So then there's AB 678, which is related to the Housing Accountability Act, which is a very long bill and piece of legislation in general. But what they did here is they increased the burden of proof that a jurisdiction has to present and make findings of before they can deny affordable housing projects. So it's kind of going back to, just because a community doesn't want affordable housing, you can't just deny it based on that standard. You have to go through all of these findings to basically say why it is being denied. And then if they find you out of compliance with that, they could potentially fine you up to $10,000 per unit. So again, just considerations as you're moving forward and projects moving forward. I have yet to hear of a case on that one, but we'll see. It's in the law. And I talked a little bit about SB 35. So this is streamlined approval process. So again, I call it the state naughty list, and there actually is a list. Don't worry, most jurisdictions are actually on it. So, you know, basically, it's just saying if you're not in compliance with meeting those housing element goals or building enough units, then a developer can come in and just have a ministerial, over-the-counter streamlined process for developing units on infill multifamily properties. There's a lot of specific requirements for the types of lots that those can be built on, but it is something that could happen. And there are, I review a lot of legislation every year, and lots that fail, like, I can tell you that this is becoming a common kind of theme, streamlined development. So I know that the legislature and many of the legislators are looking at other bills that go to more of a ministerial process for getting units developed. So again, they track that on your annual progress report. So your APRs, which then track your housing element requirements and those RENA numbers, that's how they're determining whether or not you've been issuing enough building permits. The next one is SB 166. This is referred to as no net loss. So this basically says if your housing element has properties that are designated or identified to accommodate lower-income housing, that they need to be used for that. And if you end up having a site where it's designated for that and you use it for a different use, you have to make up that lost site somewhere else in the community. So it's kind of like you have to trade it out. So it's just something, again, to be mindful of as projects and things are coming forward, that you're aware of these things, and you have to make findings and, you know, resolutions regarding each of them. This last one, we just want to highlight, it wasn't part of the 2017 housing legislative package. It came forward in 2019. But it's a surplus land act, which most communities are familiar with, applies to most city-owned properties and declaring those properties surplus. The thing that's a little bit different here is they expanded the definition to include-- The thing that's a little bit different here is they expanded the definition to include housing authorities, the housing successors, every public agency, which actually, for trying to be kind of a pro-housing bill, it's actually making it more challenging for those entities with a purpose such as housing authorities to build housing because they're having to go through a more lengthy and costly process. But what it's trying to do here is basically that when properties are sold or being disposed of, that they're first being offered to affordable housing developers. So the state is now maintaining like really giant master lists, affordable housing developers. So you make findings, either declaring the property surplus or being exempt from surplus. The exemptions, that's a whole nother topic upon a property-by-property basis, but there are some exemptions that you can try to qualify for that if you're trying to get around going through the surplus land process. But basically, all of those entities are on the HCD master list are notified that there's a property available and they have first right to come and propose or present something in your community. Now, it doesn't mean that you have to subsidize that project. You can still negotiate in good faith and get market value for the property, but it's giving affordable housing developers park and rec. It's like the next park and open space is the next tier that also gets the right to be able to get a hold of that property before anyone else. If there's no interest from anyone, after 90 days, you're free to go about doing whatever you would like with the property. And once you've gone through that process, it stays in perpetuity. So, just a consideration there. And this also is something that is going to be tracked and monitored in your annual progress report. So these annual progress reports, which were kind of like just a little, you know, reporting thing you did and sent to the state and didn't really have, you know, it updated them but didn't really have so much teeth, is now kind of a vehicle for feeding HCD information on the city's housing production. So, now that I feel a little bit like the bearer of bad news, there's a little piece of good that has come out of the legislature regarding assistance to jurisdictions. So, you know, I think they recognize they're putting a lot on local communities for producing and trying to accommodate the production of housing. And so, there's SB 2 funding, which was issued. And then there's also AB 101, which is another funding source for local jurisdictions to be able to try to build housing. So we'll go through each one. So SB 2, it came out as, they changed the name like five times, I'm escaping me, but it was like the Better Homes Act, who I think we voted on it and it passed, where they basically put an additional fee every time you record a real estate transaction. You'll now see an additional fee that feeds into this fund at the state level to be able to help support affordable housing projects. So, it's no longer available, but a year ago, they came out with SB 2 planning grants. These grants were used to, some communities used them to like update their building permit systems and other things that, again, could increase or remove impediments to developing housing or strategies or specific plans or like the overlay zone that you created, you could have, back then, you know, used that funding for that purpose. They do have out now, which is the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Portion. So this is an ongoing stream of revenue and it's based on a formula that is given to communities where you'll be given, or have an opportunity to apply through NOFA to be able to access additional funding for affordable housing purposes, if you wish. And then, the last one we'll talk about is AB 101. So this was a trailer bill to the 1920 budget. So it, if you were looking at a high level, it looks like it's funding to address, you know, housing and homelessness crisis. There's 2.5 billion set aside for that. But a portion of that was set aside for what's called the LEAP program. So it's local early action planning. And so this is one-time grant funding, which basically is available to jurisdictions to help you all prepare for the sixth cycle of the housing element. So you could potentially use it to pay for your housing element cost update or other planning-related activities. It looks like Norco potentially there would be available for up to $150,000 for that. It kind of seems like a good one. It doesn't really come with too many strings attached. However, you do have to track in your annual progress report how you're spending and using those funds. But again, you have to do your housing element, so there could potentially be some funds there for you to help do that. So, we're going to pause for a moment. I guess there's lots of information. So that's kind of the first segment, just kind of talking again about some of your community characteristics and what the state would like to see and, you know, what resources are available for you. I mean, I think, I think the main thing that we're seeing is the state really wants communities to be encouraging the production of housing units and to be removing any impediments that are stopping that. And that they've bolstered their ability to enforce and hold jurisdictions accountable. And you heard me say it many times, but that annual progress report related to your housing element, you know, is going to be a very important document and tool to continue to track that because that's where they're going to get most of the information on whether or not communities are being a good player or not. So with that, I will turn it over to you all for questions.
Do we have any questions, Catherine?
Yes, I have questions. So my first question, I think that there are a lot of preconceived ideas about what affordable housing is and what it looks like. And I think some people equate affordable housing to Section 8 housing. Can you just kind of address maybe what misconceptions there might be or preconceived notions about what affordable housing is? What does it look like? And kind of, you know, who qualifies for it?
Yeah. So, that's a great question. And when we talked a little bit about the community characteristics, you know, I had said, you know, for a household, you know, $90,000, right? That's considered moderate income. So when you start to break it down, affordable housing is your EMTs, a lot of paramedics, your teachers, your preschool teachers, you know, that are making $60,000 a year but can't afford to live in an apartment. And so it does include a wide swath. I think it does, there is this remnant, bad, you know, public housing that we've mostly redeveloped that turned into large blighted areas. You know, affordable housing these days is much different. You know, if you partner with a good affordable housing developer, you know, they go and they are maintaining those properties for a 55-year term. They're managed with onsite managers. A lot of them provide community services such as labs or after-school programs for kids. In another Riverside County community that we're doing work in, you know, there's a developer that's coming in and they actually got the Boys and Girls Club to come in and to be part of their project and they'll be doing some after-school programs and such. So it's much different. And a lot of the funding sources now that come with building affordable housing require them to be maintained from investors, especially when you get to the tax credit level and so there's kind of minimum standard of what that maintenance looks like. And there's just a lot more players involved than there was historically.
And then to clarify, so for instance, you could have a, say it was high-density housing, just as an example, but, or whatever it is, you could have at-market rate apartments or houses, because you, single-family homes, there are various ways, right, to have affordability along with a lower income or a moderate income. It doesn't, it's not necessarily a development is just all lower income, correct? You can have a mix?
Yeah, so there's mixed use, concept of you could have housing with retail or commercial. And then there's also the concept of mixed income, right? So you could have market rate and affordable units. So, if you think about like the state density bonus program, that's largely what that is, right? So if a developer comes in for a multifamily project, but they want to go at a higher density than, you know, what's typically allowed, they can include affordable units within that development.
I have more questions. Should I ask them all now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, I didn't know if we were just going to go one by one or, okay. Based on the research that you did, what, do you have an idea of what percent of Norco households would qualify for, or are, I guess, let me rephrase, that are cost burdened, so that might qualify for lower moderate income housing?
Yeah, we did pull that statistic. Let me look here really quick.
Just to kind of look at what we already have in our community and to have an idea of who might be cost burdened with the cost of housing as is.
Sorry, I don't have it on the top of my head, but I know we included it in here.
I think it was around 30%?
Yeah, so based on...
56%.
Oh, thank you.
56, yeah, 56% for homeownership, yeah.
So, okay. That number was a lot higher than what I expected for our community. So just to be aware that there are people in our community who would qualify for these programs that are living in our community. And then, a question that also came in is a public comment that I had. Just to kind of clarify what the cost of, or costs of doing nothing, right? What are the repercussions? So, in what I've heard, there's a few different things, right? There could be possible, with different laws, possible fines for denying $10,000 per unit, right, which depends on how many units we're in. So say it's a 300-unit project that just gets denied because the city says we don't want it, that could be a $300,000 fine. Noncompliant cities wouldn't be able to get more funding for affordable housing or different programs. And that includes, I know we're going to talk about that later, but we have programs that help people, you know, if they need help paying their utility bills, correct? Or first-time home buyers, that would affect those programs as well?
Well, yes and no, because those programs need modifications to be able to comply with existing law. But yeah, it includes, more is related to development projects coming in. So it depends kind of what the project is.
Okay. And then you mentioned that there, the consequence of the state could decertify a housing element. Can you just explain a little bit more about what that would mean in terms of, my understanding is then the state has more leeway to tell the city where to put things?
Yeah, so when, and I'm not a housing element expert, so I'll start there. I'm familiar with the process, but we don't draft and write housing elements. But when you prepare your housing element, right, it has to go to the state to basically get certified. And then if they decertify it, then basically you're off the list and then you're unable to get basic access to funding and they're going to be able to scrutinize your activities more.
Okay. And then Andy, you might be able to answer this one, but some of that state funding, like the LEAP grant, did we apply for any of that state funding?
Because people are watching. Can you sit at Brian's? Turn on your microphone.
And get a grant for our housing element. It was probably, I think it was 2019, was it?
Right, yes.
And that pretty much covered the cost for the housing element that we're in the process of starting. So, the LEAP grant would be in addition to, which we may not need it because we already secured the funding to help us with our funding, our housing element, so.
You know what, why don't you just stay right there, just if you don't mind?
Okay, those are all the questions, yeah.
Yeah, please.
For right now.
Greg.
I'm going to hold some of my questions back till the next, the next round, but I just want to make sure that if we're staying on track on this workshop, it's, one of the things we're looking at is that we have a little over $3 million in our housing fund that we need to find different ways of allocation to spend this money over a couple of three-year period.
Yeah.
And, but my only single comment in the beginning is that, you know, with all these different legislative actions that are to create opportunities, it seems that the challenges are ignored and the difficulties that all cities have. So, we'll create the opportunity, but there's no relief on the difficulties. And like I said, opportunities and challenges kind of go hand in hand with me on that. But I'll hold back on...
Thank you, Greg. Most of my questions. Robin.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions on some of the citations in the report, because I feel like you've gone through the first part of the report with your slides. So one of them is when you came up with the median home price as of October 6th of 2020, it's referenced as being from Zillow. Is that from closed sales or their estimates or, because their numbers fluctuate a lot, so.
Yeah, no, so that is from their closed...
From closed sales? Okay, thank you. And then I think at this point in time, that's all I have.
Thank you, Robin. Ted?
Yeah, I do have one. In your, in your community characteristics, and I'm just going to clarification on it. You go 48% of Norco household incomes can only support the average apartment rent, yet 95% of the Norco housing units are single-family homes. I'm just trying to clarify, are you indicating that because of what we have, the incomes, this would indicate to me that we have more multi-people living in a structure that they're trying to afford? Is that what you're...
Well, that can lead to overcrowding, yes. Yeah, we didn't look into your, any overcrowding issues specifically, but that typically is what happens when people are cost burdened, is there's more...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is because you're indicating that 48% of the people can only support apartment, but 95% of the homes are single-family. So either that means that we have multiple incomes in a household or these people are all underwater.
Right. Or you have the millennials living with their parents still...
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm clarifying. It doesn't show that. And I just want to make sure that's...
Yeah, there's a wide variety of...
Okay, that's just, I'm just clarifying. And under, and I know, I used to know this and I don't remember because it's been bounced around, the annual report? Who's reviewing that now? Is the housing authority doing those? I know we do it here, but the one we sent up in April, it's for teeth, yeah, who's reviewing that now up Sacramento-wise?
The HCD.
HD, okay. I didn't know if they were still doing it.
Yeah.
Because at one time, some of that was going to get parsed out. So I just wanted to see if they were doing it. And I think I'll answer the other question and, that's good, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, I have a question for you. So how many other cities, when we took on the housing issue, how many other cities did that? Do you know?
One of the things that Andy, I kind of touched on, but had something to do with it, was the statute which provided that did not provide any money to go with it to administer the program. And economics being what they were in 2012, 2013 for Norco, it just wasn't economically feasible to dedicate, you know, $200,000 worth of staff to run the program when the program couldn't pay for them, which seemed ridiculous to us. But we spent a lot of time talking with the state and HCD about their view of that and said, sorry, no, that isn't what the law says.
As I remember, once we got it going, we were pretty proud of it. Just so people know, and I have a question following this, we've actually, we've really tried to create affordable housing for the last 30 years. And it just kills me, for example, along Sierra Avenue, when we created all those affordable housing units, they're owned by one guy now. There is no such thing as affordable housing. It does not exist. Eventually, it goes away and becomes, right now, they're charging $2,700 a month. right now, they're charging twenty-seven hundred dollars a month for something we financed. And so it just doesn't exist. It's something that is a complete invention. The second thing is, and this is starting to get some purchase, the homes are actually built for two and three families. Forty percent of the homes apparently in Eastvale, some of the estimates, you have two families living in one house. They're actually designed with centralized kitchens, which I'm sure you know this, and the problem is, is you use the word overcrowding. And that's the problem, is that if you, they're trying to impose something on top of a situation that's already, they're not paying enough taxes to literally pay for that house in terms of what the services that need to be provided. Because you'll have, you could have as many as five to ten children, of which the one property tax is paying for schools, for example. So if you all of a sudden add two more units on the back of that, it becomes an overcrowded situation. And then if you don't have to require parking, just go to Eastvale and have a look at all the parking. So one of the things that I wish we could get the state to understand is, we're in the middle of the large, the first largest housing boom in the history of the United States was after World War Two. Eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet of housing. We're now building houses that are three thousand, four thousand, five thousand square feet, specifically designed to literally put multiple families in them. We are in the largest housing boom. So all of this stuff has to be taken into consideration because I, I'm very concerned we will get buried as a city. I have some other questions. I'll get off my soapbox. I'm just really concerned about those things. And the other part of all this is, as I've said before, we are, our structure is, we don't have rulers on top. We govern from the bottom. And what I'm concerned about is that they want to flip that. So that someday, somebody's going to walk up to me, and you have a pointed group that wants to do this. They will walk up to me and say, I don't want this. Fifty years, we zoned this. We already got the one letter. I will have to say, call your assembly person. Call your senator. Which by the way, as they write these things, they exempt themselves. So it's really troubling. And what I'm hoping, or I'm getting to, is I'm hoping the city of Norco has actually made a lot of efforts. I mean, Roger, four, we've been involved in four projects, high-density housing. And eventually the developer just doesn't have any money, or something happens. So it's not like we haven't tried. So my question, if we begin to present these things, that we have multiple families living in one house, that we really are trying to develop literally apartments, will we get credit for that? Or do we have to? I mean, what is the, what in your opinion happens if we say, hey, we are really trying?
Yeah, so they're going to track that by your building permits that are issued. So, moving forward, right, because everything from the past has already been counted. So they're going to track that in your annual progress report on building permits to see how many units at all the income levels are being produced. And then if you're unable to meet that, as long as you're not actively sitting as a city council when a project comes forward to you and shutting it down, then you're probably going to be, I mean, that's legal counsel. But, you know.
You have a great city attorney, so we're safe. He's a lawyer.
But, you know, that's where you kind of start to run into more of some of the issues. And I think also to kind of respond to, you know, there is the, when it, we talk about affordable housing, which just kind of has this, I mean, a lot of places are starting to rebrand it as like workforce housing, right? Because of some of the stigma that's left from the public Housing Authority projects that did not go well back in the sixties and seventies. You know, that when an affordable housing developer comes in, they have financing from the city, the state. And there is a bunch of rules and requirements that ensure that those units have to be maintained for a certain period of time that are actually affordable to the people that are living there. And if the project goes south, it's on their financing with all of their lenders. And so there's a little bit bigger of a, I guess, a risk from an experienced affordable housing developer for multifamily. For homeownership, that is what you're saying. I mean, it's hard because you're basically selling it to a homeowner. There's less monitoring requirements on that than multifamily units. So that's just another consideration as you kind of.
I guess when you, you talk about enforcement, we live in California. And the truth of the matter is, is ultimately, once it's there, it's there. And they probably won't enforce it for the common good, which means all the promises made really don't get fulfilled. Forgive me for being jaded. I do have one more question, which I can't seem to find. Oh, how many of the, and we're putting you on the hot seat, I'm sorry. The fifty, the developments that have, you mentioned some that have all kinds of social programs. How many of those do you know of?
Many. Well, yeah, we're working on some, and I know many in a lot of jurisdictions. Because affordable, because the reason why now they're coming with all the services and component is because the state money that's available to developers for affordable housing, there's, those are the strings that are attached for them, based on the income categories. And there's a real big push for extremely low-income households, which some of that, you know, comes like the veterans program, the VHHP program for homeless or at-risk veterans, which is kind of a big thing now that comes with the funding, serving thirty percent AMI households or below. But it also comes with the supportive service component of it. And that's required and written into the documents and, and underwritten into the project for the cost of maintaining that over the term.
So I have another question now. You may not know the answer. I went down, I worked for two years trying to get veterans' housing at Norco College, only to eventually find out that a junior college does not receive funding for a housing element. My understanding is that law has now changed, and there is the possibility that we might be able to put veterans' housing. We were looking at, I don't know, thirty-five units, forty units, something like that. Has that changed? That junior colleges will now have the opportunity?
Yeah, I don't know all the specific ins and outs, but I know when they did the twenty seventeen housing bill package, there was a lot targeted towards college populations.
Junior college.
Populations.
It's junior colleges. It's, they already have it in colleges, four-year schools. But junior colleges, there's no funding mechanism via the state to fund housing, which is what ultimately, when we were, nobody told us for two years, that all of a sudden it wasn't possible.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with anything specific that I can think of. I do know that there was, in that twenty seventeen, there was a bunch that had to do with colleges, but I can't remember if it differentiated between the two.
That's all I have. Anybody else? Okay, we can move on. Thank you.
Awesome. And I'm sorry, I don't have a clock, so hopefully I'm doing.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm good on time, okay. I like keep looking around, I'm like, I can't see what time it is. So now that that was like a lot of doom and gloom with the state requirements, you know, and what is happening there, we can talk a little bit more about the housing assets and resources that you do have here in your community. So as Andy kind of started off mentioning, so in the beginning, when dissolution happened of redevelopment agencies, you didn't really want to be the housing successor, but then the county Housing Authority basically wouldn't take the assets. And so then at that point, you elected to become the housing successor. As part of that process, several of the former redevelopment agencies' housing housing assets were transferred to the city to basically administer and move forward with programs. It's our understanding that in the community, the housing successor assets are your primary and really your only housing fund. You don't have like inclusionary housing fees or in-lu fees or other buckets of housing money. So this is kind of your, your main source. And we just went through all the legislation that isn't related specifically to the housing successor for you to be mindful of. But the housing successor and expenditure and the use of those assets also comes with legislative restrictions and requirements. And so that are specific to the housing successor and the housing asset fund, which is the fund that many of the monies received from housing successor activities were put into. So we're just going to go through the housing successor law and requirements a little bit, and talk to you a little bit about what housing assets you have, so that you can kind of just get a general understanding. So there is, housing asset funds can be used for administrative cost. So that's good for the city. You can pay for city staff time to prepare their SB three forty-one reports or negotiate. You know, if you did move forward with the projects, you can use those funds for staff time to work on those activities. You know, those are, those admin costs are capped at two hundred thousand per year, or five percent of the value of the assets. And Norco, that is up to an amount of six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And it changes from year to year. It has to be evaluated. So that's what it is currently. You know, I do have to say that is, it's a large amount. You know, you can't be going, getting too crazy with that because there are a lot of housing advocates that watch these things and go after communities for saying, hey, you're spending all your money on admin, but you're not actually producing units or doing anything. And then the other area in which the funds can be used, and I kind of like to call them buckets, there's kind of three different buckets. So you can use it for preserving and monitoring affordable housing covenants. So again, that gets to any affordable project, affordable housing projects that you do have or built and potentially in the future, you have to monitor those covenants annually to make sure that they're being charged the right rents or that the homeowner that bought the low-income household, you know, and is still living there as their primary residence and all of these things to maybe, to basically protect your investment into those assets. So you can use funds for that. You can use funds for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing services. That's capped at two hundred thousand per year. And then the third bucket is development of affordable housing. And so development is a very specific definition in the law. It has to be used for households earning eighty percent of the area median income or below. And it is, development's defined as new construction, acquisition and rehab, substantial rehabilitation, acquiring long-term affordability covenants, or preserving housing units that have covenants that may be coming, may be expiring within five years. So that's what the funds can be used for. Oh, sorry, correction. The homeless prevention and rapid rehousing is two hundred and fifty thousand, sorry. That it can be spent on. So each year, the housing successor prepares a different housing report that gets sent to HCD called the Housing Successor Annual Report. And we have to report out within each five-year compliance period. So we are now in the second, the beginning of the second cycle, which was, is twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. And we have to show that we've been meeting the specific expenditure requirements. So if we're developing units based on that previous definition, we have to use it on eighty percent AMI or below. And it's required that thirty percent of the funds must be spent on thirty percent AMI rental housing. So there is a specific requirement in the law related to housing successor fund expenditures that requires rental housing to be developed and to be developed at basically the extremely low-income level. And then you can't spend any more than twenty percent of the total funds, but then, again, this is a five-year compliance period, on sixty to eighty percent AMI households. So it does provide flexibility between the income limits, but you're not allowed to use it for moderate income housing. It's basically low and below with a focus on at least thirty percent going towards extremely low-income housing rentals, units. The other piece of it is, which isn't an issue here, and you know, based on some of the community characteristics, potentially pointing towards, you know, an aging population, you can spend no more than fifty percent of the funds on senior housing. So this gets back to some legacy redevelopment items where, you know, a lot of communities, because affordable housing kind of had a not-good name behind it, would build senior housing because usually the community would support senior housing. And so they're allowing that still, but capping it at fifty percent. So you can't use all of your funding for seniors, but you can, you know, basically do your fifty-fifty split between multifamily and senior units. The other piece is having an excess surplus. So again, this is another legacy piece left over from redevelopment days. Basically, they don't want an accumulation of funds in your housing asset fund. And if you have an accumulation of funds, it's called an excess surplus. And it's based on this, I don't know who thought it up, person in the legislature formula that they've put in there, where it's basically taking your unencumbered balance or the greater of a million dollars or the last four years' deposits into the fund. And so every year, when we're doing the housing successor annual report, we're calculating that and looking to see if there's an excess surplus in the fund. So we worked with staff, and we were working on our memo to basically take a look at that and ensure everything was being calculated correctly, and we were monitoring it. And we found that you do have an excess surplus. So there was an excess surplus in fiscal year eighteen nineteen of approximately a million dollars. And then in nineteen twenty, there was another excess surplus of approximately a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So what does this mean? So basically, when you have an excess surplus, the law says you have three years to spend down those funds. And so you can see the expended by column there is saying that that amount of money needs to be spent by that time. And if you don't do that, then you're basically writing a check to the state of California to be able to use in the multifamily housing program or the Joe Cerna Farmworker Program. And those are funds that go into those state programs, but there does not guarantee, and probably pretty unlikely, that those funds would be reinvested back in your community. It just goes into the general program funds. So I think that kind of answers, I think Catherine, you had mentioned, you know, what happens if you don't do anything? You know, if you don't want to spend it, and you don't want it, you potentially could end up giving it to the state. I do know some jurisdictions have partnered with neighboring communities and such as well. And I think something to kind of keep in mind as we start to go through your assets, because you do have loan receivables and other things where there's money being deposited into that fund every year, is that if we don't start spending our money, we're exacerbating the issue every time deposits are going in. And so we're going to keep having excess surpluses if we don't start to utilize and spend down the funds. So housing assets. So I mentioned that there were housing assets transferred from basically the redevelopment agency to the city acting as a housing successor. And those were primarily real properties and loan receivables. So we're going to just kind of go through each of them, so you have a better understanding of what they are. So the first category here, let's go through kind of quickly. So these are affordable housing covenants. So these are already built affordable housing projects that you do have. As the mayor was saying, you know, you have tried, there are projects with affordability covenants on it. You know, this here, I mean, when we talked about those different buckets of money, you can use a portion of the funds to do annual compliance monitoring activities. And so that is a responsibility of the housing successor to ensure that those covenants are being maintained and basically your investment into those projects are being maintained. And HCD, they haven't been on this, this kick in a while, but they were right post dissolution of going into communities and making sure that they were, that compliance monitoring was happening. We'll see if that becomes a priority. They have, we went through many other priorities, but it is something that you should consider doing if you're not. You have some loans to single families. So again, these get paid off over time. And these, again, get deposited into the housing asset fund. So every time that that occurs, then we potentially run into this excess surplus problem. And I'm probably going to sound like a little bit of a broken record by the time we get through the asset piece, but I really want to make sure you guys are understanding that. And currently, right now, staff is monitoring these and processing, you know, loan payouts when they're coming in. There's also the Wasatch loan. And so this was for the Heritage Park Apartments. And so this is what the former RDA provided a loan to the developer to develop these units. And then it's basically getting paid back via what's called a residual receipt loan, which is basically a portion of the operating, net operating cash flow each year based on your agreements. And there's a remaining amount of about four point five million. And on average, for the last five years, it's been about twenty-four thousand dollars. In my experience, these don't really ever fully get repaid because it either hits the term before, the project term ends before the cash flow can accommodate full repayment. And again, these payments every year are going into the fund, which again, can get counted towards excess surplus if we don't. towards excess surplus if we don't begin to spend down funds. So you also have a city RDA loan. So now we're kind of overlapping with the successor agency. So this is not the housing successor, but the successor agency and the wind down of non-housing assets. And so basically, the, the agency loaned the city money. And on your recognized obligation payment schedule each year that you're probably just submitted and got approved by the oversight board, I'm assuming, that that amount is approved and then you get it paid back. But only 80% of, you know, a portion of that all has to come into the housing asset fund. So this is coming in and getting approved as well. So this is just another item that is going to be potentially increasing excess surpluses and more money coming in. So I think something for you to kind of consider is that there's funds that we have now and an existing excess surplus amount, right, that we talked about, but you're also anticipated in the future to continue to receive monies into the housing asset fund for use. We won't go over this one too much. Again, this is related to the first time homebuyer loans and there's this interest income and some equity sharing. And so there's monies that are coming in for this purpose as well. So three properties were transferred from the redevelopment agency to the city acting as the housing successor. Two of those properties are really, really tiny. You know, one's, you know, .2 acres, one's .4 acres, so very small. And talking with Roger, basically saying, you know, only a couple of units can be developed there. So the idea, I believe I heard somewhere, maybe it was a public comment of like a duplex or something. I mean, those potentially could be sites where you could accommodate a few affordable housing units, likely homeownership would maybe make more sense because you have, to be able to fund multifamily affordable housing, you need to have more units to be able to make the financials work. And then you also have, which is currently in, you know, you have a purchase and sale agreement for the River Road property, also known as Horstown Ranch. This is 7.3 acres. It's your largest piece of property. And we know that there's still kind of some negotiations that are kind of occurring with that. I'm sure Andy can go into more, more details on the status of all of that. So that's kind of your largest, your largest piece of land and there's units that are to be developed there, but none of them currently are affordable housing units. It is targeted though towards a senior population. And then another thing to consider before we move on from here is just if this transaction falls out of escrow or falls out, I haven't been in escrow yet, but if it falls out or falls through, then it potentially is subject to the new surplus lands act, which you can probably find some exemptions there. But again, it's going to be really pushing all 7.3 acres for affordable housing development purposes, whereas right now, the development is including mixed use and market rate senior So kind of getting back to the funds that you have. So we took a look at your existing programs. So you have five existing programs, which were, you know, they've carryovers from pre-dissolution days. And so we took a look at how each one of them was set up and compared it to the housing successor expenditure requirements to make sure that you were complying with those regulations and requirements as the programs are currently designed. So kind of just as a recap again, because we have a lot of, I know I'm throwing a lot of law and things at you right now, but kind of just recap again for the framework of thinking about the programs. So we kind of go back to, remember, we can spend it on preserving and monitoring units. That's what we can spend the funds on. Homeless prevention and rapid rehousing or the development of affordable housing in those very specific buckets of, you know, a new construction, act rehab, substantial rehab, buying covenants. And so that's very narrow. When we looked at the existing programs, none of them specifically complied with housing successor requirements. The good news is, so I'll start with good news, is that all of them serve the 80% AMI population or below. So we are meeting that standard, which is good. But it's not necessarily meeting in the, in the terms of affordability covenants. So again, law requires ownership units to have a 45-year affordability covenant and for multifamily properties, it's a 55-year covenant. And then again, some aren't exactly falling under this definition of development. We're thinking with maybe a few tweaks, we can get us there. But as they currently stand, they're, they're probably going to need some adjustments. And then based on the information that's being collected for each of these programs, because we have to do what's called the income test. So remember I was saying when we get, do our annual report, we can only spend 80% or below and 30% on 30% AMI. We have to track all of these things. And so it's kind of difficult to obtain some of that information that's needed to report out on expenditures to HCD. So before we go into all of the modifications, and I'll kind of be highlighting some of the issues along the way and then recapping it at the end of this portion, I'm just going to kind of walk you through each one of the programs that you have and then talk a little bit about the modifications. So you have the emergency repair grant program. So this is emergency issues, you know, that are kind of code violations and safety issues. It has to be owner occupied. It's an amount up to 5,000. It's only a one-year covenant term. And again, they're all 80% and below. So again, the idea here is okay. It's just you need a 45-year covenant because that's what's required by law. And $5,000 is probably not qualifying as substantial rehab. Substantial rehab in law is, is increasing the value of the property by 25%. So I would assume, I wish housing was that affordable for everybody that 5,000 would do that, but it's probably not the case. And then the next program is your home improvement grant program. So again, this kind of works in conjunction with the previous program. It assists with, you know, structural improvements and other improvements. And it has a little bit higher of a grant amount, up to 10,000. Again, it's a one-year covenant. And so this is short of that 45-year covenant that we need and probably, again, does not qualify as substantial rehab. Your deferred payment loan. So again, this is another program, you know, aiding with existing homeowners for rehabilitation or improvement needs. You know, the amount is 40,000, which is much higher than the others. And it can be increased up to 60, up to a total of 60 if needed. It may qualify as substantial rehab if there's a really lucky unit that's lower on the market value. But again, it probably needs to be increased at an amount that can, that 25% is that threshold that we're trying to meet with all of these. And we need to make sure that we're getting a 45-year covenant on it. So kind of switching gears, those first three are all kind of what we kind of call in the rehab bucket, right, in the rehabilitation bucket. This is first time homebuyer program. So this is helping homeowners, new homeowners, maybe, maybe getting that millennial out of the house and helping them buy in the community to purchase their first home. And so this is kind of like what they call like a silent second program. And so we are allowing a maximum loan amount of 40,000 of a purchase price, a maximum of 400,000. And it carries a 30-year affordability covenant. So with this one, the key here is it needs to be new construction to be able to qualify under the housing successor law requirements. So you just need to make sure that's being utilized for that purpose. And then it needs to have a 45-year covenant instead of a 30-year covenant. If you make those couple of adjustments, just at face value here, it would adjust. We do kind of think the maximum sales price of 400,000, this program was established a really long time ago. The last loan was in 2015. So all the other programs, we get about one to two applications per year. This one hasn't been utilized since 2015, which probably means those limits are not conducive to people actually being able to utilize the program. And then the last program is your utility bill assistance program. So again, this is discounts on city sewer and water bills for, and this is both tenants and homeowners. So the previous four were just homeowners. This is helping both tenants and homeowners. They self-certify their income to basically be able to receive that fund and then there's no covenants recorded against the property. So this one was really challenging because it doesn't fall under the development bucket that we were talking about before, right? It doesn't fall in under preserving or monitoring units. So the only bucket it could potentially fall under for housing successor is basically the homelessness one. So, you know, you have 225 participants, so it's actually your most used program. And, you know, last year, we spent about 140,000 dollars on, on this program. But as it currently stand, it, we have to get it kind of into one of those buckets. And the homeless prevention one is the only bucket where it would really fall in because this isn't a development project. So we'll talk a little bit more about this. So this is really tiny. I'm sorry, it's in your, in your memo as well, if you want it to be a little bit larger. So the first three programs that we discussed again were the rehabilitation programs. And so the recommendation on most of those is the same, right? It's in making sure that it's substantial rehab and that we have the, the terms at that 45-year mark. And our recommendations portion of which I'll skip ahead and do a little spoiler alert on this particular item is, we kind of think it's best to just consolidate this into one substantial rehab program that kind of meets the needs of all of these things. And then you would be able to qualify in your community to be able to use it. And then the first time homebuyer, again, just reiterating there, you know, it would need to be new construction, new homes. We would need to increase the covenant terms. And then just looking at, and we didn't as part of our analysis here, but you know, you would want to follow up by taking a look at really looking at those program parameters and making sure that those limits are increased to where they need to be so that it's being utilized, because right now, it's not really being used. And then the utility bill assistance program, you know, it may comply if we can put it under the homeless prevention bucket, where we have to basically show that the housing, excuse me, that the applicants are housing cost burdened and at risk of losing their home or being homeless, which I'm assuming that the majority of 225 probably don't fall underneath that. And then we would have to, we're not even collecting information based on the current forms to gather that. We could take a look at it and saying it's not a possibility, but it's probably lower on the list of possibilities. Okay, now we're back to another questions and breaks here. So, you know, I just want to really make sure that you all have a understanding of, you know, all the resources you have and the legal requirements associated with them. And then we'll move on to the next segment of findings and recommendations.
Wow. Shot a big hole in our programs, didn't you?
Sorry.
No, I appreciate that. And, and I, I was interested in, and when you went through, and I was looking at on your page 23, when you're talking about the bucket list and that, and we're going through. And so the AMI has to be around 80%, correct? For most of these, as long as we stay in those?
Yeah, if you're 80% or below. But for homeownership, getting much lower than 80% is, that's really challenging.
And here's, and, you know, our new construction, we don't have a lot of, except if we went to apartment type of thing. But I'm very interested in the rehab, rehabilitation program. And, you know, we have areas, for example, right along Hamner between Third and Fourth Street, we have small apartment complexes. They're back behind commercial settings, they're back behind other car dealerships, all kinds of stuff. Robin, you know I'm talking about, you've been back, you've got students back there. Could, in, in those type of programs, those type of houses, they're not high-income homes. They're, they're not. And they're just, people are just getting by their apartments, a lot more rentals. And then also we have, throughout town, we have small one-room apartments. I don't want to call them ADUs because they're not, they're not official ADUs, but they're, they're there. They were built, they've been here for a long time. They're barns that have been, that have been converted, garages have been converted. You're talking about this excess funds and these funds for rehabilitation. Could those funds that are in there be utilized to rehab those, to get those up to code, to kind of help out our RENA numbers and get them in there?
Yeah, so you, so the concept under development, where I talked about acquiring covenants or purchasing covenants. So if you go into like your multifamily example that you were talking about, like behind the commercial, so you could go to a, a property owner and say, we want to restrict these on affordable incomes. We are going to purchase the covenants, which basically, there's like this net present value analysis that you do, that says it's worth this much, right? That difference between the market and the affordability. And you pay that amount. And then typically, they use those funds to reinvest back into improvements on the property. So that's a consideration. You could also go for substantial rehab, you could go and have your programs potentially be targeted for, you know, or marketed to those properties and property owners to make it something that's attractive to them and do that. And then, but you got to realize that in, in exchange for the money, you're getting an affordability covenant placed on the property, right? So it's recorded against the property, which, so you know, there's many people that would be happy to do that and there's some that may not.
Well, I think that's, again, that's depend, some of those are in commercially zoned properties. They've been there forever. But we have other spots in town too that have the same situation. So it just, it's going to be, we have to develop a covenant with the property owner. And I guess based upon what you're telling us, no more quick, it's got to be these long-term 45-year, some of them may...
55 for rentals and 45 for homeownership.
Wow. All right, now I got something to throw you at you. And I guess we have to, the first time homebuyer's deal, that says 400,000?
That's what it currently says in your current document.
Yeah, even though the average in...
Almost 600.
Well, that's a 600. But even in Riverside County, let's see, the average mean is 435, according to the UCR report. So I guess we have to fix that too then. And again, I don't know where we're going to find 435,000 dollar homes in town. And so, all right. Well, that's just, I, my main question was to ask about, how can we use, because I guess when it says we have to use it by June 30th, 2022, we need to get going.
Yeah, a million dollars of your current fund balance, yes.
And I'm sure that could help a lot of rehabilitation. It just has, it, it can be rehabilitation all can, it has to be new purchases or anything like that, right?
No, for rehabilitation, it can be on, it's really meant for existing units and then, or built units. And then it just has to increase the value again substantially, which means 25%.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. The first one, where is the Valley View property at? Approximate, between what and what? I'm assuming it's the point four.
Yeah.
Okay. Valley View? Second in Valley View. Is it the one that the house is set back and they started putting up metal, like a metal welded fence and there was a big tree? Is that the one, Kevin? With the chain around it?
I thought it was the wedge-shaped one.
Two properties on Valley View. We sold one of them to an adjoining property owner.
Oh, okay.
And the one remaining, it's a substandard, obviously a substandard lot.
Down at the end by, is it down by Starbucks then at the end where Valley View?
Yeah.
It almost looks like it was a remnant from where a trail was realigned. It's a very tiny, it's, I suppose you could develop it with one unit, but it would be difficult.
And the, the access point's very narrow and then it gets wider, right?
It's at the very, it's at the very end of Valley View, at the very, very end.
So past first?
Yes, if you keep going south, is one of the...
Yes, if you keep going south, is once you hit the, you, the dead end, you've gone too far. Well, you can't go any further than that, but yeah.
Okay.
So that's next to Valley's, over near to...
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a real weird shape.
Yes, it is. I remember it's kind of a, there's two...
I don't even know if you had a unit on there or not. Maybe in the back, kinda.
A few manufactured homes that, right before it and at the very end, yeah.
Perfect. And then the next question, you talked about the 25% value on the improvements to the home. Is that by individual home or is that by the median price of the community?
That's individual home. So you look at the assessed value and...
And then that was my second question. Who or how is the value of the home determined?
You look at the property tax bill and assessed value.
Okay, perfect. And then the next question, who sets the limits on the first time home buyer? So we have 400,000 because I've, and Roger can tell you, this has been one of my things for a long time. Who sets that value?
You guys can, it's your program.
So it can be determined by the council period and that's it?
That 400 was originally set by council many years ago. We've talked about returning it to council for reconsideration and obviously that would have gone, gone higher. You know, the problem is, it's a catch-22. You've got, with only $40,000 in assistance, even at $400,000, it's difficult for somebody meeting the income requirements to qualify for a mortgage of that size. So you really, a lot of communities have $100,000 of a silent second. And then of course, you'd have to readjust the purchase price to be somewhat representative of your housing stock.
So it's all, all of those numbers that you're talking about, the amount of assistance and the set prices all discretionary to council?
Right, they were in the program guidelines that were presented to council.
That was not my impression prior to this. I would have been much more of a pain to you if I knew that. And then, yeah. And then the next one, you talked about our utility billing and the homeless prevention, how we could potentially fit it in that bucket. You mentioned the 30% cost burdened. And then you said at risk of losing, is there a percentage of their income that has to be going towards housing? Or how do we classify somebody as at risk if they're already cost burdened?
Yeah, so it's similar to like a lot of the CARES Act funding that's coming out. So it's like you have to basically demonstrate by providing income information and housing costs that you're at that brink of actually needing the funding to come or needing that assistance.
Do you know what that, is that 50%? Is it 60%? Like there's a number, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, I haven't seen a number exactly and we've been looking at...
I mean, is it something that we can discretionarily set?
There's state law that defines what at-risk means in a little bit more detail. So I want to say yes, but I would think we need to look at it more closely under those parameters of at-risk because there are a lot of state programs that already define what that at-risk category is. I'm just, I don't have that information with me today.
Okay.
But it's something that if you want to adjust, we can look into.
To add to your question, have a limit of 2,000?
Mm-hmm.
So you, this, under that bucket? Or is there a...
You would only be able to use 250,000?
Total?
For that, yeah.
Okay.
It's too bad.
All right, that's all the questions I have right now.
Catherine?
Yes, could you just explain in a little more detail for someone who might be watching or a general member of the public, when you're talking about acquiring affordability covenants? Can you give a little more detail for someone who's not well-versed in what that means?
I'm well-versed in what that means and it's still a confusing concept, but yeah, so basically you have a market rate rental project, right? And if you want to place affordability covenants, right, if the city wants to incentivize putting covenants on those units, they can acquire or purchase affordability covenants to put it on there. And that just means you're basically doing an analysis of the market rate rents versus the affordable rents over the 55-year term of those covenants, seeing what that valuation difference is usually at a net present value. And then that's what you use to kind of start to negotiate with the property owner that we will pay you this amount if you place these covenants on your property. Because you have to realize, once those covenants are placed on the property, it has to be an affordable project for 55 years. So it's, it's a little bit of a trade or an incentive for that action. There are some that, that are willing to do that, especially if it's a dilapidated property and they're looking to bolster that up, even when they're basically getting prepaid rent for 55 years, which is kind of not necessarily a bad deal for some people, but that is a consideration. Another time that that also works well is if there's projects that are expiring, where the covenants are expiring soon, you can go and say, we'd like to purchase, you know, ensure affordability for a longer period.
And then who enforces that to the question that, or the point that Mayor Bash brought up? Who kind of keeps track to make sure that that affordability is still there for the 55 years that it's supposed to be?
So technically, the city is supposed to be monitoring that on an annual basis. So you go out, my firm actually does this for some communities. So you go to the property and based on the agreement that was drafted, you take a look at their files, make sure that the residents there get the rent rolls, that everybody's, for each unit, it's at the right income category, that they're doing certifications and collecting all of that correct information. And then you prepare a report that's in your file because if, like I said, pre-disolution, HCD was like coming after cities for these files, they haven't really done that in post-disolution. Knock on some wood here. But again, that would be for when HCD comes in because you have to realize redevelopment funds and the now housing successor funds are kind of all linked back to HCD. Because even in redevelopment days, we had to report out redevelopment activities to HCD. So they're the governing, you know, kind of I guess entity enforcing compliance.
Okay.
Yeah. it to somebody else that's low income. So there's not a ton of like equity building per se, and there is provisions typically drafted in there that if it is sold to somebody, right, that's not low income, what happens there, what happens with equity sharing and whatnot. But those are, they get pretty complex.
Okay. And then kind of to come back to the point that Councilmember Grandmayor made, because that was sort of one of my questions. We are looking at what we can do for a homeless strategic plan in our city. And so just to reiterate that $250,000, right, that there's, that we have money in this fund that could be used to support a strategic plan and to support the homeless. And then what affordability, just to reiterate for people, I think too, again, speaking to the public, people, I've heard we don't have affordable housing here in Norco, but we do. So I know that you looked at that in the report, just what is the affordable housing that we have there? We have our senior, just to reiterate, we have our senior apartments?
Yeah, it's the Heritage Park. We didn't go through as part of this analysis and look at all the various income limits and stuff that those populations are serving, but you have that Heritage Park property. And then you have mostly single-family homes that you provided.
And we have, I think, 22 single-family homes is what I saw?
I think there's 88.
Oh, there's more?
88, yeah.
Okay, so there are a number of, of single-family homes, okay. My other question was in terms of the Horstown Ranch. So there's the three properties that the, that are owned by the successor agency. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong. And Horstown Ranch currently, I was not on the council when that came through. So right now, there's no affordable units that are being offered there. So that project, I guess it would help with RENA numbers in terms of the bottom tier?
Above moderate category, yes.
And I, right, okay. And then I think you're going to get to recommendations later, so I'll hold my questions on that. Thank you.
Greg?
The Arcadia property, is that the second lot in? Or is it further in? The one that's all...
You mean Acacia?
Yeah.
Acacia, yeah.
Casia, excuse me. I put the emphasis on the wrong syllable.
Sorry.
Because there's a vacant lot, like second in from Wiley Gym, that's not it, right? It's the one that's like...
That and the, where the house is for sale and there's two empty lots on either side. That's the same owner on the very corner of Acacia and Alhambra.
Okay.
That's one owner that's trying to sell those three parcels in one block. So it's the one, as you go down, Acacia towards Poly Drive on the left, and it's in between two occupied homes right now.
It's got some torn-up fencing and...
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, back to a public comment about putting the duplex there, maybe a thousand-square-foot house, single-family only would fit there when I took a look at that. You talked about our different programs specifically like emergency repair grant and home improvement grant, and you have suggested modifications to increase those percentages. And on this report that, let's say, emergency repair grant to address emergency situations, electrical issue, broken water heater, threatening conditions for the home, and we've had one to two applications, but the process takes three to four months to complete. Something seems skewed in this that if I have an emergency situation, it's going to take me three to four months to make the process or do we front-load this money?
If I may...
Or, okay, and it goes the same with the home improvement grant?
Yeah, so I...
Timeframes.
The timeframe on the home improvement grant, that may well be, based on your research, Tara, I guess that's three months. But I know from our, our current administrators that for emergencies, when there's a bona fide emergency, no air conditioning in the summertime, they waive the, the regular bidding procedures. They get somebody over there and it can be done in a matter of days. So if it's a true emergency, that should not be three months. That's not the way it was designed.
And then we don't worry if the application...
They have to meet the income verification, but that can be done pretty quickly.
Okay. Because then you also state like the home improvement, which you're trying to tie these two together, that's a four-to-six-month application process.
It really should not be taking that long.
You think?
I don't believe it does, frankly.
But it says this right here.
Yeah, I trust the memorandum. But I can tell you though, when it's an emergency, that is handled in a matter of days.
Okay.
Because I mean, these are seniors by and large, and we're talking, that kind of an emergency can be a life or death situation. We're not going to wait around. We're not going to, we're not going to, they, they have their instructions and actually Michael Baker International, they're our consultant, they've actually been very responsive when it comes to, to these, these seniors in need, so...
And that's based on one to two situations per year?
Yeah.
Assuming that an application follows up.
And we used to do many, many more. I don't know why the volume is so low. It could be definitely increased.
Okay.
I'm...
We do want to make sure that we're not...
Right.
one bundle, where it becomes close to that 25% threshold for, so it would qualify for substantial rehabilitation. Even in that situation, I just want to be clear, an emergency situation could be front-loaded, as you say. That could be knocked out first. It would still be part of a, call it a $50,000, $60,000 loan grant package, but we wouldn't have somebody, I just want to be clear, we wouldn't have somebody in need waiting around three months. The key though, as Andy says though, is to consolidate them so that they qualify under current statute.
Andy, can you use your microphone? I'm sorry. I don't know.
What I'm saying is, these programs, we need to relook at them. If we want to continue, for example, this grant or some of these programs that helps our senior residents here in the city of Norco, have to look at all that potential, everything needs to fund this program and all that.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem to me that one of the significant drawbacks, let's say somebody has no air conditioning or needs a water heater, you're going to go to a senior and say, we can do that for you, but you need to sign a document which says this is going to be 45 years or 55 years of you having to have this house affordable. I just, I can't imagine, I just can't imagine that.
Yeah.
And with, given the volume, I mean, you could easily accommodate the emergency grants with non-housing funds. And so your constituents are still taken care of. Our residents are, are helped in these situations of crises, but it's not, it wouldn't, maybe it wouldn't be part of our housing programs.
Gotcha.
In terms of funding.
Greg, anything else?
Catherine?
Yes, I wanted to ask one more question. In terms of the first-time home buyers program, even if we change the terms or increase the amount, given that there aren't any homes really, you know, $400,000 or under right now, it needs to be new construction, correct? So that program again would have to be funded outside of the funds that we're talking about today, correct? Okay.
Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. So Andy, so basically what we're going to hopefully leave here today is have a plan. Will we have to hire a consultant or... This is the consultant?
There's a lot of education on that.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, I understand. And then John, I have a question for you. So for example, on Second Street, there was redevelopment project that got, I don't know if you remember, the nurse, it's the five acres that was done under redevelopment. Then we have the houses on Sierra redevelopment, houses on Old Hamner redevelopment. Were those required to stay low to moderate income? And if so...
I would, I would expect though, I would expect that they were, although, again, this is recollection, but I think that the affordability covenant back in those days was 30 years.
So the nurse, I mean, I was a parking rent commissioner when that was sold. He's now selling that for millions of dollars, trying anyway.
There should have been a recorded covenant. There should have been a recorded covenant, which is, if he tries to sell it for millions of dollars, that recorded covenant is going to pop up with the title insurance company.
Okay, just curious, I'm just curious.
But it also might be, again, it's hard to remember how time flies, but-
You're older than dirt, John.
That the covenant's expired.
Okay, I would just, I'm just curious, because it sort of exemplifies the problem, which we have no idea who's going to be sitting in these seats 55 years. I mean, we're, as a city, we're only 56 years old.
Well, and as, as I think Andy pointed out, one of the things that we've gone through with particularly first time homebuyer loans, is they do have a covenant, a recorded covenant on them. People are saying, "Well, wait a minute, I can't sell it. What do I do?" And there are, there are some rules in the covenant to address that, but still, makes it much more difficult.
So part of it is going to do a plan. One of the things, just as a sidelight off of what Ted said, is, right now, just off the top of my head, I can count 10 apartment complexes right now in the city of Norco, and if I looked harder, I'd find more, but that's two to 10 units that nobody even knows are there. There's a really big one over on Detroit, there's one on Valley View, there's one on Hillside, and they're stuck in the back and they're very long, so I don't know how, but 45 years, you tie that up, that there'd be. And then I have some other questions, but I'll wait on those. So we do have some of those, would they have had covenants, John, that the homeowner would still have to be living in the house?
Yeah, that's actually, like I said, what we've gone through with a number of the loans, and even prior to first time homebuyer loans, that there is a requirement that the original owner remain in the home. It becomes dicey when the owner dies, where we have one now, that we at least believe that the owner is no longer living, and daughters have taken it over and are renting it, that they're non-responsive, so we're probably going to have to litigate with them.
You had a councilman that bought two of those houses. He now lives back east. That wasn't 30 years ago. So if there was a covenant on that, that, I mean, or would there have been? Those are both redevelopment houses. Oh, no, I'm sorry, his wife bought them.
Before she was his wife.
Before she was his wife, and his son bought one, yeah, I know, I get all that. But I mean, that actually shows the point, is that this stuff is really hard to enforce.
Yeah.
And there's two avenues, right, from the homeownership piece, because it is a lot more challenging on the homeownership piece, and there's just less ice on it, right? For the multifamily, you've got city monitoring, state, like, everybody's looking at, because it usually takes five different funding sources to get those developed. But on the homeownership side, it's the city's monitoring process, of which you send a notice every year and have them certify that they're still living in the unit, and then upon sale, as John mentioned, the title company should flag that there's affordability covenant on the property and notify the city to ensure that it's being maintained.
And, and one other comment about, and I, I don't even want to try and remember the wife purchase stuff, but while those might have been funded by the redevelopment agency, they weren't necessarily funded by low and mod money.
That's what I was wondering.
So that there was no requirement for any affordability covenant.
And so basically what happened is, is the design was for low income, essentially. They were purchased by somebody who wasn't low income, and they were eventually sold at a profit. So we just have to, if we're going to do that, I just would, if we're going to do that, I would just want to make sure somehow-
But if they were funded by redevelopment agency loans, it wasn't necessarily that they were out, remember, there's an 80/20, so the 20% set aside? If they were funded out of the 80% of the bond proceeds, there wasn't any affordability requirement.
Okay.
So, but that's a question, I mean, I can't answer without looking, but-
So basically, what that means is 55 years from now, Robin and Catherine are going to have to make sure that they follow the laws, because there's three of us that won't be here. Anyway, let's, let's move on. And then if somebody else has another question? Oh, please, go.
One other question. You had mentioned on the covenants, you know, the, the city would give money towards basically maintaining a rent cap, for lack of a better term, on those, those units. And then you mentioned that the owner could then take that money and make improvements to upgrade. What are the requirements or restrictions and/or consequences should that not be done? Because you're already probably dealing with folks that aren't maintaining structures in the best, and then we're going to come, say, "Hey, we're going to do this." What's the recourse if they-
Right, a really good agreement.
So it's up to our city attorney to make sure it has teeth, or-
Frankly, it's not so much even writing the really good agreement, because they probably are. It's having the fortitude to enforce them.
Okay.
And you, when you come in with a woman who's, you know, her husband deceased, and she's 67 years old and has been living in the house for 25 years, and you're telling her, "No, you can't sell it, and you can't," you know, there are equity issues that you end up addressing.
Right, and I get-
There's no third party out there that's probably going to enforce it. HCD yelled at people for a while, but that's really what they did with the-
Yeah, and I mean, I think it's important to differentiate the home ownership, single family, and then-
And the multifamily. And that's what I'm talking about, John. Like, if we went to an area of town where Kevin was talking about, where you've got multiple units that are in disrepair, and the property owner does not seem to have the incentive or fortitude to bring those up to standards that we would like to see. So we go in and say, "Hey, can we put some covenants here, assuming they don't exist?" Is there, like, do we write into that, "We would like to see you bring them up to this level with a portion of this money," or can that person just put the money in their pocket and say, "Yeah, I'll keep the rent low, but not make any improvements"?
No, no, we'd condition the expenditure of the funds on moving the value of the property. In addition, we do have code enforcement. I mean, I don't, I don't know the, what the standard is-
Let's not talk about that right now.
Yeah, just remember, when I got on council, there was no code enforcement, and it was voted out by edict from the city council. There was no code enforcement. So that, does, can a city council overturn this? Like, if an old lady stands at the podium and says, "Oh my God, you know, this crazy person 20 years ago forces on me, and this is my retirement, and I didn't know it." Can the council overturn that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, ultimately, it's discretionary.
Yeah, just-
Yeah, I mean, I don't know about the no code enforcement, but-
Well, we didn't have code enforcement when I got on council.
Oh, I know, but what I'm saying is, today, if the houses are substandard in a way that they are in violation of the code-
Building code, yeah.
Then we can do something about it through code enforcement. I mean, I've, see, I've sent out how many, 10, 12 demand letters today, so.
I just have one more question, I'm sorry. So who determines what the place will cost? Is that based on income?
For which scenario, sorry?
So, let's say you have 10 apartments, and they agree to the 45 years. 10 years from now, how do you reassess or assess what they should be paying? What?
So every year, HCD sets out guidelines by county for affordability limits. And so the agreements say, like, these shall be for low income, 80% AMI units. And so they publish numbers every year, and then you compare it to those, to those reports every year to make sure that those residents are paying that amount.
And your company would be contracted to do that, or we would have to have somebody in the city, or?
Yeah, I mean, our firm does it, we train city staff to do it. I mean, somebody, somebody needs to do it, to do it, but there's ways to do that.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on. Thank you.
So, we are to our third and final portion of the presentation, which is, I guess, the good stuff here. So, you know, just kind of, again, recapping our findings and recommendations. Some of it, we've already talked about, so I won't belabor things that we've already gone through. I think our hope today was to, you know, kind of just give you a really good overview of kind of what you're up against, so that you can start to think about what some of your next moves may be. So we found four kind of main findings. So we're going to go through those one at a time here, but just kind of high level, you know, needing more housing options. You have that excess surplus, where you might need to give money that could be spent in your community over to the state to be spent anywhere in the state. You have some existing assets and some land that you have in your possession right now, that you could potentially try to negotiate or better leverage. And then we talked a lot already about the existing programs and how they don't fully comply, so we won't belabor that one too much. But that was another finding, that they don't all fully meet the requirements. So, again, just to recap, so, you know, like, based on the characteristics that we saw in the community, you have aging population, aging housing stock, it's cost burden residence. So based on all of those characteristics, you know, maybe providing more of a variety or a range of housing to be able to accommodate more people in the community, and then way that they can afford. The second major finding was that excess surplus, so we have $1 million, or almost 1.1 million, that needs to be expended by June 30th of 2022, or else we have to write a check to HCD, which I don't, I've never written a check to HCD, but- I really wish I could say that that was the case, but no. You just lose the money. You just lose the money for that year that's calculated for excess surplus. So you'll notice how we have the excess surpluses by fiscal year, so it's calculated every year, and you have to track each one separately. But, yeah, you just lose the money, but you're still accountable for the production requirements. Just kidding. So the third one, well, IT is making our presentation work here. Could I try now? Oh, there we go. So, again, we talked about, you have the three properties, I think we went through that in detail, but, you know, there could be some opportunities here to kind of better leverage those and think about ways, since, you know, land is, land is gold in California these days. So, I'm trying to figure out how to better leverage those. The fourth finding, again, that's just relating to the existing programs, not fully complying, so we don't need to belabor that anymore. So, you know, our recommendations, we included in our memo, I didn't include in the presentation today for the sake of time. You know, there's lots of different options that you can use that would satisfy housing success or requirements. You know, they're generally limited, we talked about new construction, substantial rehabilitation. You can do homebuyer assistance, based on those things we discussed. You know, rental subsidy for at-risk households. So again, so that's the homelessness test there, at risk of homelessness. Purchasing covenants, and we kind of detailed some of those pros and cons at a high level there for you, along with some other funding sources. So I just wanted to point that out, as something you could go back and refer to in there. So we used all of that, plus everything we've already discussed, and came up with some recommendations. So the first one is a NOFA. So this is a Notice of Funding Availability. You have money in your housing asset fund now, you have $1 million we need to spend pretty soon. And so basically what this is, is you just issue a NOFA that gets sent out to affordable housing developers, because the funds need to be used for affordable housing purposes. They come in with their idea, they come in with, they have site control somewhere, and say what they would do with the money. You can target that NOFA and craft it if you wanted it to be single family, if you wanted it to be multifamily. You can link it to your housing element, you can, you know, craft your parameters in there, as long as we don't violate any housing laws, right? You know, to kind of target that back, and just see who comes back and responds. And then you can evaluate that. That's kind of the fastest way to get the money out. But the hardest part within, in that process is, you know, them having site control, finding a site to develop. But they're pretty, they're getting pretty savvy these days, so I have hope that that one would work. You can also acquire land, so you have money. You could go purchase property and then turn around and issue a request for proposals for affordable housing developers to come develop something specifically on that site. You know, I think the difference between the first one that I mentioned and this one is, you know, this one's a little bit more labor intensive for the city, because you're going out, you're purchasing the property, but you do have a lot of control and kind of say over that site and what gets developed there. But again, you'd have to go out and use your funds to acquire that. Again, you would draft that RFP, you know, to the parameters of what you would like to see built there, as long as it complies with all of these legal requirements that we went through, and that it's meeting your housing element goals. I think the one thing to kind of be mindful of is that, you know, there is going to be a portion of this, especially in the NOFA example, of where we would want to be requesting that at least 30% of the units be 30% AMI, because that is a minimum standard that you have to meet. The other ones are just maximums, but they want 30% at 30% AMI rentals. So I think if you were to do something like that, you'd want to just make sure that that is covered, so then you can do your five-year reporting, and you've met that requirement and won't run into issues. Because if you don't meet it, they increase it to 50% until you meet it. So there's kind of more ramifications if you don't spend it properly. It's interesting, you know, in listening to you all kind of talk about these potential, like, smaller apartment complexes and stuff, there's this kind of newer trend, I guess, that's kind of coming out. It's called the preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing. So this is affordable housing that's on the market, that's already affordable, but it just doesn't have a covenant on it. So let's just say, one of these apartment complexes, it's already charging low rents, and it's kind of already affordable. You could go in there and kind of help with the preservation of that, get the covenants on it, and it may not be as hard of a sell, in a sense, for that property owner, because they're already charging similar rents. A lot of times, you know, you can help them invest in those older properties and that are in need of renovation. And you're, you know, just increasing your supply of affordable housing. So that's, this is another area that I think the concept of what you guys are talking about could potentially fit under. Okay, modifications to existing programs, I don't think we need to belabor that anymore, but that was another one, and all those recommendations that we had there. So this recommendation, again, is that concept of acquiring covenants on a proposed or existing project. So we talked a little bit about the Horstown Ranch. So you have that in progress, there's 500, I had it written down, over 500 senior units that are proposed to be there. None of them are affordable. So maybe you could use your funding and talk to the developer to see if there could be a portion of that that could be income restricted for seniors. You have that in the pipeline. There could be other projects that have come in the pipeline where you may want to negotiate those things as well.
Is she talking about Second and River? It's called Horstown now? Okay, I'm just curious.
I thought that was a common name, I thought you were going to know it.
I'll ask about that in a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I know, I thought, I know I was teaching you that name, but, um, yeah. So, again, you know, there, this is, again, I mean, it sounds like you guys have in the back of your mind some of these properties. There's not a ton of multifamily in the community to be able to go purchase covenants on multifamily, but you do have some, and that's a consideration there. So, you know, let's just kind of take a look at, like, well, what do you already have? And maybe what are some easy, you know, wins? Or maybe what are some tangible approaches that we can take with relationships that we already have on projects coming in the door? Or if there's, you know, specific areas that you want to try to improve and do the purchase covenant option? And that brings us to the end.
Why don't we, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay.
And then we'll come back and ask our questions, okay?
Okay.
Sound good, council? So let's bring it back, and we'll ask any questions. So, let's start with Robin. You have any questions?
I was wondering if you could give me clarification between two of your recommendations. You have the RFP for acquiring land, and then the, basically, the NOAA. The RFP, could we potentially go in and buy a property where there's already existing housing under the RFP?
Yeah, so if you, if you went and you used your mind to purchase a property that already had units on it, you'd want to make sure those, nobody lives there, because if you wanted to convert it to affordable housing, you'd have to relocate them all, and that's a very, very expensive part of project. But you could do that, and then issue an RFP for a developer or someone to come in and do like a substantial rehab of the whole thing.
Okay.
But that's probably a pretty costly option.
Right. And I understand that, and the, if we did have to displace folks and sustain them while the project was being done, could housing funds be used for that, or would that have to be a separate bucket of money?
You could use housing funds for that, of the displacing agency, yeah.
So then, the difference then with NOAA is that- So then the difference then with NOAA is that.
Or the NOFA, probably, NOFA.
No, the, the naturally occurring affordable housing. On that one, would, is the premise that folks would stay in their home and we would rehab around them? Or is there still that implication of having to displace folks for a little while and pay for that in addition to the refurb?
So it depends on the scope of the rehabilitation, but I think the difference between those two is, is that the naturally occur, for naturally occurring affordable housing already is owned by somebody and then you're just helping to maintain and ensure its affordability, kind of like that purchase of covenant idea, right? For them to invest. Whereas the RFP concept, either you buy vacant land and then you issue an RFP for a developer to come in to build it, or if you wanted to, you could buy land that was already, you know, let's just say you went and bought one of those multifamily apartments, right? Then you're the owner of it and then you would RFP someone to come take it over and do the rehab. But that's way, way more, that's pretty complicated.
It's a heavier burden on the city through an RFP.
Well, if you were to purchase something that people already lived in. So I would, I would go for vacant. Vacant or, you know.
The next question I had in your report on page 17, under some of the general housing expenditure, I saw that there was a mention of rental subsidy for at-risk households, which to me seems different than our utility assistance. How would a jurisdiction go about a rental subsidy? Because I've heard, obviously through COVID, we've heard about other jurisdictions doing that. How does a jurisdiction like Norco have the potential or ability to do something like that with our housing funds?
Yeah, so you could use existing housing funds and similar to when we talked about the utility bill program, you would design a program that basically the person would have to like certify that they're at risk at being, of being homeless. So they can't pay when they're at risk of being homeless and then that they're not receiving any type of other rental subsidy from any other.
And that fit, that would only fit in the homelessness bucket?
Up to that 250,000.
Up to the 250,000. Okay. Then the last question I had for you at this, I'll preface with, at this time, in case something else comes up. Under NOFA, you talk about basically like, we would throw this out here, like, we want a project, come build it for us. I'm just wondering what the realisticness of that is and how profit is made? Because ultimately it's about the dollar. I don't think any developer is going to come in out of the goodness of their heart and help us out and build something, just previous experience. So with all the requirements for sprinklering and solar and energy efficiency and all these things that the state has applied to housing, and we want to keep it affordable and low income and all these things, and you say there's this master list, like what is the benefit to a developer if we throw this NOFA out there? What do they get?
Yes. Okay, so affordable housing developers, you would just be one of the, like I was saying, like there's probably like five or six funding sources typically. And one of those funding sources are tax credits that you, they get from the state and which they're allowed to have a $2 million developer fee. And so that's how affordable, like in part of their underwriting is how they get paid, most of them are nonprofit, from the project. And then there's other subsidies that they're getting for that project as well. And so they're versed and skilled at examining these, well, they're familiar with this funding source and with how to layer and make projects work with all of the various funding sources that are available.
This actually, I think I know the answer, but unfortunately it just occurred to me, ask you the question as well. Assuming that there is subsidy from this city agency, I think that that triggers prevailing wage.
That's what, I just feel like NOFA, while it's a recommendation, like I can't wrap my head around the feasibility and realism of that happening.
Drive up the cost like crazy.
Right.
So, and John, so you could look into about what, where we've landed with most city attorneys on this is that redevelopment funds and therefore the housing successor funds didn't trigger prevailing wages. I'm not an attorney, so I say to review that. But some of the other funding sources in the project will, so they've gotten around that requirement, because you write it out, it's like 30% onto a project. But I can tell you that this is a pretty common method for the, getting these funds out on the streets and affordable, like big affordable housing developers are pretty, you know, savvy and aware of how it works.
Would you mind just giving me a couple of those names so I can just do some general research on?
Yeah, so like Bridge Housing is a really large affordable, Bridge. National Core is a really large one, they're located, I think Main Course and Rancho Cucamonga. Link Housing, it's L-I-N-C, is a large affordable housing developer. God, there's many more, but those are the ones.
And so you say they're all primarily nonprofits?
Most of them are, yeah. There's for-profits and nonprofits, but.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Catherine.
Going back to the Horstown Ranch, the property on River Road. Right now, that, that property is set that it's over 500 units for seniors, so it's, it's not meeting any affordability or affordability, right, for seniors or for vets, and it's not providing any housing to students or young families or working professionals, because all of the units right now would be designated to seniors at market rate. What kind of recommendations would you have? Are there any other recommendations in terms of that property?
Yeah, so you're already in a purchase and sale agreement for that property, right? So you have to, and you know, unless they drop out or the city takes recourse for them not complying with that, you're kind of locked into that. But what we looked at as part of our review is that, you know, it's still being negotiated and worked out, they're still trying to close on it. It had a relatively long term for when they were supposed to close. That it could potentially be negotiated with them and you, you have money to provide subsidies. So they have 549 units, they, we want 25 of those restricted and here's a million dollars that we have to give to the state, right? So you could try to kind of negotiate that into part of the deal.
And just, and more for Catherine's benefit than anything else. The development of that property is not quite as simple as we're making it sound. We don't own all the property. The developer owns a substantial portion of it, including access areas. So that's one of the reasons why we get to argue about the appraisals for years, but that's one of the reasons why the appraisal was so low, is that the property really requires being developed in conjunction with the surrounding properties.
Landlocked, right?
It's not quite landlocked, but. Well, nothing's landlocked in the sense that you can acquire, you can acquire an easement for access, but to the extent to which it damages the adjacent properties, it's not quite a simple question.
Yeah, on that, Catherine, if you haven't already had strongly, that has quite a history. Maybe talk to John and.
Okay, well, that helps to know because that.
If I do that, you're going to have to like block off four or five hours and buy lunch and dinner, you know, it's a.
Okay, so, but, so the, the, the purchase sale agreement is for seven acres, but the scope of the project is more than that seven acres. Okay, that's helpful to, to kind of understand. Are there any strategies that we could take to leverage? I know this has kind of come up before and maybe it just is a way for us to meet above moderate income RENA numbers, but looking at, you know, those, as Councilmember Hoffman mentioned, you know, converted stables or caretaker units. We have properties in town already that have units that may or not, may or may not be being rented out. You know, they're similar to ADUs, but they're not necessarily ADUs. Are there any recommendations of how we could use those in order to meet our RENA numbers or how we would do that?
Yeah, that's probably more Alma, but so, because the funds that you have, right, are all, have to be affordable, but that's probably something you can take a look at. It's not something we had in our scope to review, but maybe Alma has some ideas for it.
The thing is that for them to count as, as ADUs that are reportable, they have to be permitted as ADUs. So that's my understanding. I don't know if John has anything to, back to that. I mean, as far as them being able to be counted as affordable units or market rating. Market, they're probably still considered market rate, because again, there's no, there's no.
Okay, and then I guess a lot of these ideas are very interesting in the sense that, for instance, the NOFA, we could customize, you know, putting out a notice of funding availability where we as a city could kind of set some parameters or try to look for ways, you know, if we wanted to try to find some low-income housing that fits in or that kind of works with our rural atmosphere. So looking at how, how could this work, you know, in our community, given what our community is? And the same with the RFP, acquiring land, thinking about, I just, I think of some of the areas on Hamner that butt up to the 15, they're not surrounded by any houses, they're probably zoned commercial right now, but you know, are there places where, where housing, you know, with commercial might be a possibility and it's not going to impact, right, the rural lifestyle that we have? So I think that these are definitely interesting to see if and how they would work in our town.
Greg?
Well, thank you for your report and understanding that you're just the messenger on this. So I think, right, for Robin, your, your question on all the different, how a affordable housing developer does his financing, where he acquires his financing, his tax credit, on and on and on. I sent you a number, a phone number. It's a consultant friend of mine, that's what he does for a living. And it, it's a pretty involved process and typically this is on large-scale projects to go all through this.
Yeah, typically, I mean, we've seen them on smaller sites, but they like one to two acres. When you start going bigger than one to two acres and it's like multi-phase, but it's, that's usually the sweet spot, but we have half acres where we've seen projects done too.
So a couple of comments and then maybe some, you know, because you kind of asked for direction, what best suits for the city. As far as the project at Second and River, we're calling that Horse Ranch now.
I think that, maybe that's what I'm calling it, but you guys.
It's called Horstown.
I'm not put, I'm not putting any stock in that at all at this time. I know some of the information you said is, you know, the city has a long history of working together. It's with this developer. We've only done, to the best of my knowledge, one project with him 12 to 15 years ago. This current project is, we talk for a while and then eight months later, a year later, we come back with another proposal and then we need a refresher course.
The only comment I'll make is you're going down the road. Is that that's not agendized and we have a contract with this developer.
Yeah, I understand where we're at, but I'm just saying, within this report, I'm not all that open to what you're making for suggestions, okay? I think Kevin brought up a good point when you were talking about different complexes, whether it was Detroit Avenue or Sierra Avenue, that, what you're really talking about is just infill projects that we have. And I think that's the key to make this work. And you know, we touched a little bit about whether we want to call these caretaker units or ADUs or whatever in this count, just broadly, and obviously it would need a lot of massaging, would be, could we reach out or could there be a way to reach out to the property owners that, you know, have a back house for rent, have caretaker units, whatever category we have with that? And to offer them low-cost financing to rehab these projects? You know, that would be, you know, $5,000, $10,000, no interest. That would help us expend some of these funds. And at the same time, what we could do is, you know, just as a thought, say, all you have to come in is make a, a simple over-the-counter application, have the building inspector go out there, meet the people and go, yeah, you need a new roof or whatever, and waive the, the building permit fees and we would take that cost of the fees and let's say, charge it back to the admin portion of this, you know, where we have like $600,000 that we're allowed to spend.
Yeah, so you could do that.
I'm sorry, I just want to finish on that, that some type of process like that would benefit the residents with housing stock that we have, that people are living in today, and help us expend these funds.
Yeah, so you could do that for those caretaker units. Again, you could do the purchase of covenant idea, right? Which you're making sure that caretaker unit is 80% AMI or below and in exchange for that, you're giving them money and they're placing a covenant on that unit. Or you can do the substantial rehab path. Which might be kind of hard because it's over all value of the property, but those would be the two avenues. So yes, you could, it just would take some examining and looking at a few, you know, looking at that specifically and what the program requirements would need to be to see if it would actually financially pencil out as a substantial rehab method or the purchase of affordability covenant. But they're all getting long-term covenants placed on the properties. So that's, that's, you know, the give and take there.
I'm just trying to think how you would, you know, community outreach, but it's something that would help us, because that's going to meet the very low-income part of the scale.
One other thing, Greg, that.
Mm-hmm. Right. Okay. And somehow I'd like to find another magic bucket for this $250,000 where we can help our seniors, but also put more money towards the homeless. I'll leave that to whatever the laws are, I guess, on that. And then just, one other little suggestion I'll throw out to you is that, on that single lot that we have over by Riley Jim, that, I mean, I guess we could put out a notice to, you know, a developer to develop like a single-family home there, but we could also look at it as a community project to, you know, we own the land, let's work on maybe a project to build a single-family home with the city, you know, donate it and try to support at least, you know, a veteran, just pull that out of the air. And maybe try to make that a city project using these funds. And instead of just putting an RFP out for like, you know, one single-family home. Are those things possible?
Yeah, a good partner for smaller projects like that is Habitat for Humanity for a single-family as an example of that, someone that might have interest, but yeah.
And, and, and those are permissible uses?
Mm-hmm. As long as the end result is 80% AMI household is living there with a 45-year covenant, you're good to go.
Okay. That's about all I have at this time, Mayor.
I just have a couple of questions. One, I was thinking of the prevailing wage and I'm trying to think outside the box. You mentioned the word workforce. When we spoke to Senator Roth, didn't he use the term, they were trying, part of the impetus behind these laws is to get people to live where they work. So like, for example. So like, for example, in Corona by Dos Lagos, there's actually a really interesting complex that has, they live above, well, it's an old concept really, but it's something we got away from, and they have their offices below. And I, as I'm thinking of Sixth Street in terms of purchasing land, like, for example, near where the Holiday Inn is going to go, there's actually a house next to it that is taking up an acre. You could do a workforce complex there. Is it possible to purchase? And then the other place, maybe to look at that and to seek out, because you, you also can do that in such a way that you could, could low-income be part of something where you're not only offering a living space, but you're also offering a workspace down below? Can you couple those things to allow? Because the truth of the matter is, kids are never going to be able to afford these homes, never. That's a pipe dream. It takes, you got to buy a crummy house to eventually get to a house in Norco or Eastville. But if you're able to offer something whereby they can actually make a living, have a house above, and maybe offer is, can that somehow, so that we market that in such a way that we bring that in so that, one, they're making an income, and, two, it's low to moderate income? Is that possible?
Yeah, so those are called live-work units, and so live-work units would be allowed, and so you could use the vehicle of the NOFA, of Notice of Funding Availability, putting these parameters in that that's what you want, that type of project, to get that money or the RFP method. The only thing is, is that when you do the underwriting, the financials for the project, the subsidy from the housing fund can't subsidize the work portion, it can only subsidize the living portion. But that just becomes a pro forma shell game and it's just more headaches for consultants like me to figure out, but it is doable.
But I mean, maybe it's a, maybe it's a way to think outside the box. I mean, I'm starting to think down Hamner Avenue, there's a whole bunch of little houses that, they're sitting on an acre of land, I don't know what they would cost, but maybe is, do cities ever gear themselves to saying, okay, we're, I mean, we have this Navy base here, we have the, I mean, there's a lot of businesses here in town, one of which is, we're about ready to have Goldie. I mean, maybe we begin to create some sort of, there must be businesses that are attached to that that aren't part of it, do you know what I'm saying? So in other words, Goldie maybe needs an accountant or something, and the accountant needs an office, and they don't want to travel anymore. One of the things I'm hearing is that people don't want to drive anymore. So maybe we begin, I mean, Fourth Street right across from City Hall, we have the Navy Base, which it would seem to me contractors might like that, but then we also, that's a large plot, and then maybe if you attach a commercial element to it. We were just talking about, was it, was it you, Ted, Stater Brothers, at the corner of Second and, if you were to convert, he was saying after three years, they talk about converting those into affordable units of some kind, which would actually feed that commercial zone? Are those all things that would give us numbers and that can be funded in some way?
Yes, your, yes, your brain is in the creative space of, you know, how to accommodate it based on the sites that you have, but that is something that would be allowed. You would need to get covenants, yeah, you would have to destructure it so that, like I said, the end, the end goal of what you're spending your money on is getting you a housing unit, right, that's restricted at the various income levels. But yeah, you can do live-work, you can do mixed-use, so it can be, have a residential, commercial, or retail component of it, and all of those projects are allowed, it's just the subsidy can only be used for.
So we could actually try to market these things outside the subsidy to help us get arena numbers and do it in a way that is a win-win? I know we're talking about the subsidy right now, but we could actually do it outside that too, correct, John?
And if, and if you're talking about subsidizing the work part, excuse me, the living part, you might be able to find somebody who, when they get to build something for half of what it would cost them otherwise, is going to do that because we're paying for the housing part and it's, so they don't care whether it's, there's a 55-year covenant on it.
And I think we have places where that would be acceptable to our lifestyle, because what we're trying to do is protect the neighborhoods as much as we can. But there are areas on, even on Sixth Street, where people don't even know there's apartments there, that maybe we could create those kind of, you know, two-story, you know, low-profile buildings that are Western-style, whatever architecture is, that might, might, might work. Anyway, that's all I have.
There's a project, and I'll try to send Andy the name, there's a project in Santa Ana where they did that exact thing, where their live-work units and their affordable restricted, it's near their train station, and they're like two stories tall that they did, it was probably about three or four years old.
Well, this complex down at Dos Lagos is, I mean, I would have a different architecture because it's kind of real modern-looking, but they look like really nice apartments, and then down below, you got insurance offices, you've got all kinds of different offices and people living there.
These don't fall in the affordable category, but if you drive down Pacific Coast Highway in Carlsbad, there is a giant project which takes up three straight blocks of living on top and working on the bottom.
All right, well, and you know, there was at one point, we had a vision for Sixth Street like that. Problem is, is that they're long, narrow lots, and the lot, one lot out of the three would want so much money that it wasn't feasible. Does anybody else have questions? Yes, Ted?
Well, you skipped me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ted.
I was hurt, my feelings are hurt.
I'm sorry.
All right, so that's okay.
I apologize.
You know, it's, it's tough enough to follow Robin and Catherine and Greg, but to follow you too, so here I go.
I'm sorry.
And I think one of the most, the important thing here, and this goes back to Andy and John, is that we probably need to research the covenants we have existing on our projects to see where we are, to see how many of these are actually in effect, so we don't get caught short on these, that we've already spent the money on and done this stuff. So I'm just, that's just, I'm throwing it out as.
I think that that's stuff that's fairly readily available.
Okay, I'm just, I would just want to make sure that they're up to date, and something that, whoops, we forgot to sign, I don't want to hear that. And then I guess, John, confirm that the prevailing wage thing will not? You don't know, and so that's a, those are questions.
No, I mean, we're faced with battling statutes. I mean, there is in fact statute which says, used to be redevelopment agency, but if a city, with closing a housing authority, subsidizes a development project, the prevailing wage applies. And frankly, if you look at most of the housing statutes that were, have been enacted, there's a requirement kind of at the bottom that says you're required to pay prevailing.
Okay, and that's, because that makes a big difference in spending money. And I guess my question on that.
Yeah, I know, that actually.
Well, that's.
Back when they were originally adopted in 2017, that was kind of the discussion we had, was that, gee, it looks terrible for what it might do to Norco, but look at that last line, which says you have to pay prevailing wage, which case the.
Well, and that's why those, those units in LA cost $700,000.
Right, exactly.
So let me ask on this one. Is there a percentage or is there a cap on the amount of funds that we can use to purchase these lands? And that, there's none, on the monies we have, there's not a set. So I mean, if properties that we wanted were to eat up that $1,000, $1 million, that's what it costs us. Okay, so there's no cap on that. And then are there any regulations or, and, because Kevin was talking about these combinations to utilizing not only these housing funds, but say, for example, and I'm thinking of Pomona, the city of Pomona, where they built those veterans' housing areas, those are affordable veteran housing units on that property, and they use some funding from the VA to do that. Can that combination work also for that specific project? As long as we put them in a covenant, and I guess the major thing we need to think about is, is that covenant, correct? That's the key.
Covenant and affordability level, yeah.
Okay, because that's, that's going to be the key, is keeping these things honest then. And so. I know, we're got done. Yeah.
Okay.
We may need to think about maybe having two. 要考虑这些，建议是这里吗？ Perhaps we can then, I mean, what is the options that we need to follow? It's not going to be solved here tonight.
No, yeah, it's not, this is, but.
Just, Kevin, I just have one, real quick.
Please, please.
And just, just for those, the 2021 legislation, legislative, there's 12, real quick, housing elements, laws coming through. Some of them are going to be redone from the 2020 session, and there is saying things about housing, retail centers that are left vacant, and they have a period of time, and they can be, if they're idle, they can be put into housing and put into multi-housing things. So these are all things that are coming up in the 2021 session. So thank you, Kevin, for skipping me.
I'm sorry, Ted. I'm sorry. So anyway, why don't, I think that's a very good suggestion, because I don't know how we can proceed. Do we have any volunteers to be on that committee?
I nominate Councilmember Newton, he had some really good ideas.
And who's the second one? No, you don't. Be quiet, Newton.
I think Councilwoman Grunmeyer would be an excellent choice for the housing, because her and her homeless thing, she would fit right in there.
Okay, all right, then I make a motion that we nominate Newton and Grunmeyer as the committee. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second, hon.
Second.
All right, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Absolutely.
Motion passes unanimous.
Great, so anyway, we're running out of time. Thank you very much, it was a very good presentation, we hit with a lot of questions. As you know, we're a very unique community, so we're trying to figure out how to make this happen. Andy, do you have enough from us to? All right, thank you all, thank you for the three hours, really appreciate it. Meeting is adjourned.